Mr. Loria.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Waiting for our third. She's getting coffee. Our clerk's on our way.
So we can talk?
Mr. Loria, no. We started the meeting.
Sit right there and be quiet.
You have to start at five thirty. We did start the meeting.
Oh, we didn't say the page.
Go for speed, that's all. Right? You start low from a different speed. The meeting. So be patient. I can't.
You know, that's one of my attributes.
What's that?
It's one of my attributes is patience. A very patient person.
I'm not.
Scarlett's fault. He asked for some.
Cause it's.
Saying something like, hey, mom. And we tried to pass it off. I mean, I'm not.
Uh, no, she's active. Watching a very important. Auction.
Oh, she's watching it.
We're, we're, we're in the meeting. We're just waiting for Roca. Thank you.
Thank you for this coffee.
Can I use the carrying? Cause I didn't make any. Jim's bringing you with your rest of your coffee.
We did the pledge.
Your order.
Perfect.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Well, see.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Right here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, there is one, uh. Uh, addition I'd like to make on a new business.
Okay.
I'd like to make it, make it in front of claims, please. For the Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center. Uh, we have a individual here to do a presentation.
Any other additions or corrections? So that'll be A and claims will be item B.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other additions or corrections?
I don't know if anybody in the audience would like to be on the agenda rather than.
We don't ask them to be on the agenda.
Why not? You know, we get the three minute, you get the three minute public comment. So.
There's committee of the whole thing.
Okay.
Need any further? Can I have a motion to pass the agenda with the stated changes?
I make the motion.
We have a motion with support.
Yep.
To, to approve the agenda as stated with the changes. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item three, a review of minutes. We have the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
I can.
We have a motion on Commissioner Scott with support from.
Simmons.
You'll get it.
Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries item three B, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I've read those and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment on agenda items only. This is agenda items only. There's public comments. There's rules that apply for that. They say your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment and that is on agenda items only in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence from Adsego County related to the opposition to Camp Grayling expansion plan that has been received and filed. That was very interesting.
What's?
The expansion they're looking at, a lot of acreage. Item six, consent agenda. We have Ida, we have, uh, six A through six H. Is there any on here that the commissioners would like to consent to? To combine? Or would you guys feel more comfortable taking these individually?
I don't have private going individuals.
Me neither. Okay. Item six A, we have resolution to accept childcare fund basic grant. This resolution is sponsored by probate court. Judge Scott Williams and friend of the court, Michael LaFave. The state of Michigan fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget includes an increase in childcare fund. Basic grant funding to a maximum of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, an increase of forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. From the current maximum of fifteen thousand. Approval of the resolution will document the county's acceptance of the CS, of the CCF grant. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three and authorize the county administrator to sign this, to sign associated documents on behalf of the county. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the. The, uh.
Exactly.
Grant.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there any discussion on that?
I thought they did a good job explaining to us.
Any further discussion? Roll cover.
Uh, Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item six B, resolution to authorize purchase of animal control vehicle with accessories and to rescind resolution twenty-two dash sixty. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-two dash sixty to accept quotes. For purchase of an animal control vehicle and needed accessories. Ford Motor, Ford Motor Company abruptly canceled their approved vehicle. Purchase without notice. The sheriff's office subsequently located it twenty twenty. Located a twenty twenty-three Chevy Chevrolet Silverado. Oh my goodness. Available from Cork Chevrolet of Rain Tree, Massachusetts. That meets specifications for an animal control vehicle. Approval of the resolution will authorize purchase of the Silverado. In needed accessories at a cost not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents, which includes eight hundred dollars in travel expenses. Approval of the resolution will also rescind resolution twenty-two dash sixty, but acknowledge purchase of an eight-star slide-in animal control unit. Authorized by resolution twenty-two dash sixty. The abrupt cancellation by Ford Motor Company resulted in an increase of twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents in cost.
I'll make a resolution to make a motion to pass that resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Wiltie. Is there any discussion on that?
I have, I have one question. You said it would take a week to go, go get it, pick it up. Is that five days, seven days?
I don't know, a week. Depends on what we schedule the airline trip and then. Is driving back. So there may be an overnight. The week is just, once it's passed, then we'll start the process to get it.
Yeah, cause I can't imagine it take a week. Just go there, grab the truck and drive it home. You could test drive it so fast.
Did we ever get a cost on shipping it?
I believe with the committee in the hole, wasn't it two thousand dollars more?
On shipping it? No, he did not have a cost on shipping.
It was nineteen hundred.
His number, I believe, was over two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yes, over two.
Yes, I don't recall that.
It was.
I thought that was a gap. Like, I didn't think he really looked into it. I thought it was just kind of a guess.
I thought it was eighteen hundred.
I, I believe he looked into it and gave the number.
Yeah, he'd give a number. Almost two thousand dollars.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No. Item sixty, resolution to amend land bank authority interlocal agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Treasurer Karen Paglowski. On December twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, the Board of Commissioners approved an interlocal. Agreement between the Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority and the County Treasurer to create the Ogama County Land Bank Authority. Article. Four of the interlocal agreement requires that the authority. Be governed by a land bank authority board to include six men, or six members appointed at large by the Board of Commissioners. Who are residents of Ogama County. Approval of the resolution will allow for appointment of members who are not residents of Ogama County. They're by allowing recum of members who possess a specific skill set beneficial to the authority board. The Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority has approved the change.
I'll make a resul, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution as, as read.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
We have a support from Commissioner Wiltie. Is there any discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
No.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Item sixty, resolution to appoint land bank authority member. This resolution is sponsored by Treasurer Karen Paglowski. On December twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, the Board of Commissioners approved an interlocal agreement between the Michigan Land Bank Fast Track. Authority and the County Treasurer to create Ogama County Land Bank Authority. The Board of Commissioners must appoint all members of the County Land Bank Authority Board. Except for the County Treasurer, who serves as chairperson of the Authority Board. Approval of the resolution will appoint Cindy Rosebrew to the Land Bank Authority. For a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And acknowledges the services of Dave Reesner as a past member of the Authority Board.
I'll make the motion to. Approve the resolution as explained.
That's accurate.
Motion for Commissioner Scott. With support from Commissioner Mayhew. Is there any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Items.
Sure. May I? Have a floor for a second.
Sure.
Um. You're offering discussion. And yet we're having differences in votes and, and I just. I wonder why and, and, and I don't, you know, we're not taking time afterwards to discuss it or should, should we be able? I'd like to hear. I'd like to hear why opposing votes, uh, happen.
It's up to the people. Well, hey, guys, that's up to the people. They have, they have opportunity for discussion if they would like to speak their opinion. That gives them opportunity to speak it.
Right. And then we take the vote.
Correct.
And then by my surprise, there's opposing. A po, opposition to it. And that's where I'd like to know. I, are you saying then I should just, when you say as their discussion? Like I made the motion. I made the last three motions.
Correct.
So should I then, when you ask for discussion, should I say, is anybody opposed this?
No, that's not, that's, that.
Well, then I don't know until you vote.
What does it matter how anybody else votes? They're voting their opinion.
Well, I'd like to hear their opinion.
Why?
Why? Well, maybe I'm, maybe I changed my vote if I heard, if somebody told me why.
That, that's not how a meeting is ran. They have opportunity for discussion. Prior to the vote, we take the vote and we move on.
All right. All right. Well. Okay.
Item sixty, resolution to amend Board of Commissioners' rules of procedure. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator Timothy Delahanny. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved operating rules of procedure. Section eight point three of the rules establishes standing committees of the Board of Commissioners. Approval of the resolution will establish a transit committee among the approved standing committees.
One of the members of that committee want to make the motion?
This is for the transit.
I make the motion.
Commissioner Simmons? This is for the transit committee.
I'll second.
Commissioner Wiltie, is there any discussion? Tim, would you have anything to add to this?
No, it's a pretty simple amendment, but important that we have it recorded in the rules.
I've come.
Any discussion?
I have some discussion. Uh. Uh, Mr. Wiltie and I, uh, attended a transit meeting and it was very beneficial. We learned a lot. And I think this committee will, uh, do great justice by establishing it to better understand transit and what's going on with transit. It, it was. An enlightening meeting for us.
And then you have the opportunity later on, when we talk about committees in, in your, uh, what you've attended to further discuss.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item six F, resolution to adopt time clock procedures policy. This resolution is sponsored by County Administrator Timothy Delahanny. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-one dash one two eight. To purchase the Nova Time Automated Employee Time and Attendance Software Package to improve efficacy and substantially reduce chance of error in processing bi-weekly payroll. The Nova Time System became fully operational in fiscal year twenty twenty-two and was successfully integrated with BSNA. Accounting software. Utilization of the automated time clock system by all hourly employees assures proper. Allocation of compensation consistent with requirements of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Approval of the resolution. Will establish procedures for use of automated time clock systems and formally state the board's expectations of use by all employees. I'll make the motion to support this.
A second.
We have a motion with support from Commissioner Mayhew to approve item six F, resolution to adapt time clock procedures policy. Discussion. I, I have, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Simmons. I have some questions for Tim related to this. Uh, I'd asked you after our last committee of the whole meeting. Um. Whom's not utilizing the time clock? What departments are not?
So you, um, should have all received an email with, um, a breakdown of this and we have, uh. Question is which departments are not? Do we have that in the sheriff's office, uh? The deputies, the road patrol group and the corrections group. And in the courts, i- is the Teamster Group, um. Really no else to describe them, but, but they're the court employees who, who are eligible for overtime.
That are not utilizing it correctly.
Right.
So out of the county employees, how many total county employees do we have?
The total number of all employees is roughly one fifty, give or take. For those that are not exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act, meaning there are employees who, if they work beyond the forty hours, are eligible for overtime. Uh, we have a hundred and eight total of that group, forty-two, once the policy is, is passed, uh, between the policy and one of our. A collective bargaining agreements, forty-two are compelled to use that, uh, system. So punching in hourly.
So less than half, a hundred and fifty of them and you said forty-two.
Hundred and eight who are.
I'm sorry.
Not exempt, uh, of that forty-two who are using it. So, uh, ratio, I believe it's around thirty-nine percent, maybe forty percent total that are utilizing it.
I thought by that list that you sent us, I thought it was higher than that.
Going off memory, so.
Okay. My, my other question is, is, did you have something Commissioner Simmons, you wanted to add first?
Yes. Um, you said forty-two will be using it, um, in what areas do they work in?
So let's, uh, first of all, anybody who is a member of the steelworkers bargaining unit will be using it. Uh, so that's all of your transit employees, employees on the first floor here. And then any employee who is at will, literally works for the county board, uh, if it's hourly, will be required to use that. So that would be people like the administrative secretary required. Um, and that's that group, if you will. It's what I can remember off the top of my head.
So there are. Sixty-six that are not using it.
That's the math, yeah. A hundred and eight minus forty-two.
I mean, obviously there's numerous.
Let me clarify that. They, they're using it. They're just not using the. You know, punch the time clock. But everybody, uh, who gets a check from the county, with the exception of the board, uh, is utilizing. The system. And that would also include like the planning commission who gets a per diem and so on.
But they're not utilizing the time clock, which is what we're discussing right now.
Then, then how do they punch in though?
Uh, I can only repeat what I've heard because I'm not directly involved in it. If I understand, they will, uh, either at the end of the day or the end of the week, will get, sit down and. Say I worked eight hours Monday, seven hours Tuesday, sick day Wednesday, one of you, and just fill it in from memory. In, in this dangerous, uh, at least from a perspective of compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, because if we have an employee who misremembers or otherwise, uh, misrecords, um, that doesn't necessarily excuse us. Uh, from the liability, from the overtime pay liability.
Is there a timeframe, the, the way you're talking about there? Is there a timeframe that an employee can come back and say, hey, I wasn't paid. I, I made an error. I, I actually worked. Sixty hours and, and I only documented thirty by hand pencil writing it down. Is there a time period when they can come back and say they weren't paid correctly?
Think the short answer is no, there's not a limit to it. I can only again relate to what I've experienced in my career. In fact, very early in my career. Uh, in one of the counties, I worked, a group of employees came forward, uh, mainly driven by, um. Uh, say supplemental payments were paid to one group of employees who came in and said, well, we also have these hours that we worked and were compensated for and how we would like to be. And in that case, it went back three years. And at the end of the day, the county was responsible for compensating those employees. Uh, one thing about a policy like this, it helps prevent that kind of thing from happening. If you're already compelled to punch in and you didn't punch in, well, now there are. Uh, you know, consequences that, that come from not doing it as well. So it doesn't again excuse us, but at least there's a policy in place and the, the employee knows. You clock in at eight-thirty or whatever the time might be. Uh, but yeah, to answer your question, it gets kind of long with it, but, uh, from, from what I know of it, no, there, there was no time limit. Now we do have our county attorney. Uh, on Zoom who maybe has some other thoughts on that.
Commissioner Simmons?
So there are sixty-six employees. We just take their word for it. And hope they remember.
Take their word for it and then the department had, uh, ties off before it gets to payroll. You have a chain of people involved who are telling us this is accurate and true.
So if I take, let's say for instance, but I don't, I guess I don't understand why the corrections group wouldn't have to be doing that. Cause I mean, they're, they're at the jail, aren't they?
They are.
But they don't have to punch in.
Yeah, I don't know what the. Procedures are at the jail, uh, directly. Uh, I mean, they, they could be that way, but I don't, I don't remember us installing a time clock there for that purpose.
I bet there is time clock over there.
There, there could be.
Is there?
No.
Was there ever?
I'm like, this is like two years. I've heard that there was, there's an old ancient chair songs. Yeah, it was a, it's decommissioned.
So what you're telling me is they just say, I worked these hours this week and you say, okay, thank you. And where we go.
It's not that simple. There's a whole checks and balances that go on too. There's a whole process of daily reports and. Payroll sheets and it's not just them sitting and doing it from memory.
Part of this process also, this, this software is help preventing and managing overtime, which we've had a significant issue with.
I know, yeah.
Um, I know since I've been sitting here. So.
And, and to add to that too, another thing it does, we have some departments that work on a number of grants, uh, grant programs. And so we're able to code. And again, able to code their time to that grant. So that when we get reimbursement, we know it's real time. And I think as far as reporting to the. Branding agencies, that goes a long way. And you've got a documented record. We know exactly who worked and how long.
Right. It's all part of our checks and balances. Commissioners, do you have any question, any, any? Discussion, Commissioner Wiltie.
Yeah, I do. So accountability obviously is the most important things of any operation. And, uh. I'm just wondering, can I ask the underserved question?
Please. Please.
So for the corrections, what, what's the reason that we're not using a time clock? Do we, you know that?
I would defer and, uh, there's several different reasons. One, the way the system was set up originally when we created it. So when it's all universal between corrections and sheriff's office. Um, ultimate waste department had, after we got it set up as far as why a time clock is. We have checks and balances in place as far as to counter not punching in, punching out as far as filling out overtime. We. Well, those two supervise. So. Is there a simple answer? No. At the end of the day, we have our system set up that we operate by and it's universal corrections.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, like Tim had talked about it. And I mean, we're, the system isn't just time card based that it, it. We had a lot of, lot of time being. Diverted from different areas of the budget. We got many people, many people that do. Work in different lines of business and we have to account for that. And this system does that. Does it very well. So. It's not just a open and shut. You, you don't use a time card. It doesn't, the system doesn't work for you. So. We, we got some other critique to go and we'll get there.
The other thing is Commissioner Wiltie is, is, um, we also had Tom, who's our IT expert. Um, you're also able to. Download that off its app or software on your phone and also clock in from your own phone. Um, he's able to put a radius on and, and I mean, so we've looked into other avenues. Um, to try to meet the needs of all the departments. So. Um, bypassing this, this helps protect the county, correct?
I believe it does. Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
So really they're, how, how do they do the accountability? How do, so they punch in on their phone?
No, no, I just said that, that the avail, the, not the availability, it, the software, the, I guess, what's the word I'm looking for? It's there, but we're not utilizing it. You, you are able to. Tim has, has. Done it. The software is there. We're just not utilizing it. Cause that was one of the rea, uh, reasons rationale as far as not everybody comes here to. Punch a clock in or walk us in the building, you know, some, some act leave in, in, to do their job. And so we looked into, are you able to clock in from your phone and put a distance or radius and in all that software is available. We're just not utilizing it.
So there really isn't any accountability. People weren't punching in a time clock is what you're telling me. Is that correct?
I don't either. To, to, uh. Correct. The last I knew.
Can I mention something?
Yes.
Especially with just to go with Christian Simmons. I mean, just because you're not using a time clock, doesn't mean there's not accountability. I mean, we still have people here doing their jobs and. We have faith in doing their jobs and they say, they have process in place. We can, I mean, obviously ask questions to find out those processes, but. I've been in a lot of different jobs, many different areas of industry where you don't have a time clock. And still run, run correctly. So. I just think that, uh, the unaccountability part, we have to really watch what you're saying. I mean. If we see that type of actions, then, then we know we have a problem. But I don't know of any issues that we're seeing offhand.
Wait.
That's causing that.
There were some issues last year with our audit. There was on comp time.
And these are things that I need to be educated.
This was supposed to help, help that. And I don't think any of it was intentional, but there's a, there's, you're a hundred percent right. There's a lot, there's a lot that I didn't even know what comp time was. I don't get comp timing. Sorry. So I didn't know what that even meant. But there was out of, I think, three that were audited. Um, there was two that, that were not accurate. So this was supposed to help with that.
Okay.
So, and, and there has been cases that, that, uh, other employees have brought against the county that, that this would also help. Um, protect the county.
Right. And I get that question. I guess I must be old school. You know, I'm kind of like trust is good, proof is better. That's kind of my analogy stuff. So just seems like. We're asking people to remember when they worked.
I think this is a first step, passing this policy. So we're, we're doing our job. I feel.
I think people that are punching in are doing, but. Accountability on the other, but I don't know the system. I don't know the system you're using. Um. So. Maybe I should come over and you could show me.
Is you a binder today?
I know you are.
Roll, roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Brenda Simmons.
I heard.
Brenda Simmons.
I don't want to board on this. Because I, I, I do have a question about accountability and I, I would, I would need to go talk to the underserved. To convince me that. This is a great program.
We're voting.
No.
We're vote, okay. Vote no.
Craig Scott.
Is that an abstention?
She'd know. I voted no.
Vote it no? Okay. It's I vote yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Item six G, resolution to appoint Parks and Recreational Commissioner member. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator Timothy Delahanny. The Board of Commissioners established a park and rec. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator Timothy Delahoney. The Board of Commissioners established a park and rec. A Parks and Recreational Commission under the County and Regional. Parks Act. It is a duty of the Board to appoint members to the Parks and Recreational. My goodness, Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks Commission. Member Scott Bell was recently appointed to serve as the Statutory Planning Commission appointee to the Parks Commission, which left his current seat vacant. Approval of the resolution will appoint Ellen Pugh to the Parks and Recreational Commission. For the remainder of a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Scott, did you have, did you have an explanation on this?
Oh, well, it was just that Mrs. Pugh's name wasn't on that list and I brought it up at the committee as a whole that she is the member. That we put on. And then Scott Bell. Was under another uh, spot and he couldn't fill the planning commission appointment. So I I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, so many, how many are on that committee?
There's eight right now, I think.
But how many, how many has there always been on that committee?
We we varied between seven and nine. There's been nine openings. We.
Well, there are nine positions.
There is nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Will Cobble? Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yep.
Item six H, resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Ogoma County budget. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator Timothy Delahoney. On September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution twenty-two dash one two eight. To approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that local units of government periodically adjust the budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. Approval of the resolution will authorize and acknowledge general fund revenues increases of. Sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and expenditure increases of eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. The resolution also approves a budget for the tax reversion, reversion fund for the commissary fund.
I'll make a motion to accept. To authorize us to.
We have a motion, sorry. We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
No support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any discussion? Roll cobble. Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yep.
Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Item seven, A, new business, a Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center. Come on up.
Thank you. Another year has gone by, so I appreciate, yeah, having me here today just to give you an update on what we're doing at the center and. How we're providing services to the children and family in your community. Um, Becky Yunker, the Executive Director of the Northern Michigan Children's Association Center. So. Those of you who are maybe newer, we um, are located in Roscommon County, but we provide services to all the children here in Ogoma County. When there's allegations of child abuse and neglect. So when those reports get made to Children's Protective Services or to law enforcement, that child needs to have a forensic interview. That child comes to our center for that forensic interview. We partner with law enforcement and CPS. Um, on my staff, I have two full-time forensic interviewers that do those interviews. After that interview, then we assess with the family on what other services are needed. So that interview is so important because we want to ensure that these kids are being interviewed by someone who has the training to interview kids. That we're um, asking questions that are developmentally age appropriate, that we are ensuring that they're not leading, that they're not suggestive. Um, and we're getting the most accurate information. So that way, the cases that we need to pursue and hold offenders accountable if they're abusing our kids, we're able to do that. Um, just as important it is as kids who are not being abused, we don't want to receive disclosures when something's not happening. Um, and so ensuring that we're providing the best services possible. This year, my theme is I'm going around to all the counties that we serve. We cover um, six counties now. Um, this is our eighth year of service and um, is really, we need to remember. As I pointed out on this top sheet that I gave you, it's more important than anything. And this happens more often than we ever suspect that it's happening. Um, we see kids come through the center all the time and we have to continually realize. One out of ten children typically will experience sexual abuse by their eighteenth birthday. Sadly, only about thirty percent of those kids are ever going to disclose until they become adults. Um, and so what we wanted to do is when those kids do get the courage to disclose their abuse. Making sure that we're providing an environment for them where they feel comfortable enough to be able to talk about what's happening to them. So if you look at that second sheet that I gave you and outlines, it starts with where children are heard. That's what we do at the Children's Assessment Center. We want to provide them with a um, very child-centered environment where it's very trauma-informed. Where we can make sure that they are heard. When you look at the squiggly lines without a CAC. Often those kids are going through multiple interviews. It's a very stressful um, uh, situation to go through that investigation. They could be interviewed by law enforcement, then interviewed by protective services and then have a medical exam. Um, and then a lot of times those families are just struggling with where do we go for services? What do we need to get through this trauma and how can we help our family and kids? So at the center, that's what we want to strive for is this is an environment where kids are being abused. That's where they can be heard. So now with the CAC, you can look at that nice circle, how we coordinate those services. We work closely with a multidisciplinary team. So we can ensure that the families are getting all the support that they need. So not only is that where children is heard, we want to make sure that's where children heal. So law enforcement, their job is trained to go out and investigate to determine if a crime was committed. Um, they're not out there making sure that the families, obviously their hearts are in the right place. But to have the time to make sure that the families are getting the help that they need, if they need counseling, if they need other services, a medical exam. Um, so that's where we want to support that family then after that investigation. So not only do my, with my two fu- full-time forensic interviewers, um, we have two full-time advocates. Those advocates are responsible. Who are working with the family through that whole process. So while the interview is taking place, an advocate is meeting with those non-offending family members. To talk about what services do they need? And sadly, because they might have come be, you know, come to the center for allegations of sexual abuse. And that's probably one issue that that family is dealing with. There might be drugs and alcohol in their home. There might be domestic violence. It might be just a single mom who's struggling with finding daycare and our advocates work with those families to help them find whatever services they need. Um, so we want to be there to help them heal. We offer medical exams to these kids. These kids are often, when they've been sexually abused, worried about their bodies, worried about if they're damaged. You know, they might be concerned about having an infection or some type of sexually transmitted disease. So we want to make sure that those kids receive that reassurance with that medical exam. We've expanded into providing an on-call service. So we have nurses and advocates on call twenty-four seven. To respond to any adult or child. That's our first step program. Um, and we know that evidence collection is so important for an investigation. And when a sexual assault has happened within a five-day timeframe, that's the best opportunity to gather that evidence. And just think of these kids or even adults sitting in the chaotic environment of an emergency room, waiting to have a sexual assault kit done. Um, we do those down at the center. We have a partnership with the hospital here. We have partnerships with all of our hospitals in the counties that we serve. That if they don't need that emergent medical attention, they come right to the center to have that medical exam done. So there's a nurse there to meet with them one-on-one and advocate to meet with their one-on-one. And they're out of the chaotic environment of the emergency room and then ensuring that they make sure that they get all the support and help that they need. And then at that time, the nurse, all of our nurses are trained to collect that evidence. Um, so we can hold that evidence until law enforcement gets it. Um, we follow their protocols for change of command. We partner with the tracking kit. Um, and ensure that all of that is following the state protocol. Then actually, um, I provided you just an overview on stats. Um, you'll see it's kind of Ogoma County has went up and down a little bit between two thousand and nineteen and twenty. That was when COVID hit. Twenty twenty-one is when kids were starting to kind of get back in school. We went where we had quite a lull. Because we weren't even getting reports to protective services. These kids weren't going to schools. They weren't going to doctor's appointments. They weren't going to daycares. Um, so we didn't have mandated reporters letting us know what kids we should be concerned about to investigate. Um, and now, so in twenty twenty-one was right up there at a hundred and one kids. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we started leveling out a little bit around sixty-three kids. We anticipate Ogoma County is going to have between sixty to a hundred kids every year. Um, and so you think about that last year, that was more than one kid a week. From Ogoma County that came to the center on allegations of abuse and neglect. Those kids need services. They need help. Um, so we provide that. The advocacy, you'll look at two hundred and ninety-nine of those families reached out to our advocates, asking for support, asking for help. Our advocates were there to help support them through that process. And then um, mental health services, a hundred eighty-two of those kids received mental health sessions, meeting with a therapist. Um, and making sure their mental health needs were getting met. And then if you also look at, I think we have prosecution. Um, our medical exams, it's coming through for medical exams and prosecution, we're always a year behind. Um, and obviously now we're really behind because of COVID and courts. Um, you know, shut down, but overall, looking at then making sure that we're holding offenders accountable and prosecuting our cases. Um, so I just want to thank you for your support. Thank you for partnering with us. Um, I think it just gives a message to the community how important it is that we uh, support our children. That we want to be in a community where we uh, want to raise uh, kids at where they're not being abused and neglected. Um, and so with that support, we're able to do that. I want to put a little plug in for where we stand financially. Um, you know, we are federally and state funded, which is always up in the air. Um, our federal funds are bulk of funds, which are victims, victims of a crime. So the Victims of a Crime Act has really taken a hit over the last three years, partly because of COVID. That fund is filtered by fines and fees with crimes. And then also um, litigations and lawsuits that happen at um, a federal level. With the court systems cutting down for two years, we are expecting in the next two years, we're going to see a dip in that funding and a decrease in our bulk of funds. Um, I think I believe I did send the emails out to all of my commissioners. Um, we did get threatened for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year. They told us our funding was going to be cut in half. That would be devastating to children's advocacy centers. We did um, fight with our, kind of got our legislators on board and um, they went to bat for us. And we were able to retain that funding and stay stable. We weren't, we did not receive an increase. The funding was from two thousand and nineteen. We were expecting for twenty twenty-three, we would get an increase. I had hired another interviewer. I had hired some more staff. Expecting an increase that we never got. Um, we're going to be stuck, um, at least with this for this year. I was just on the legislative call today. We're not sure even what, no one's telling us what our bulk of funds are going to look like for our twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. Um, so we're working really hard lobbying to try to um, help with our state funding. Um, we are in the DHHS budget for CACs. Um, but even currently where our funding is right now, only about sixty percent of that covers our budget. So we're still out there raising. Another, you know, thirty-five to forty percent of our budget just from our local communities. So without your support, without the commissioner's support and the community's support, we would not be able to provide these services to the kids. And it would be devastating for our families and for our kids without these services. Um, so this year's allocation, um, I am just asking to sustain where we had been at for the last few years. Um, and but also, and I believe I sent a copy of the um. Agreement, but there's another one and but just moving forward. Um, as you're looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, our budget starts October first. Um, but as you are planning, it's usually right around that fall season when you're starting to look at what your twenty-four, oh, twenty-four budget would look like. Um, if there's an increase that you would be able to provide the center. Um, without us knowing what that stability looks like, I'm asking all the commissioners and all six of our colonies to take that into consideration. If there's any wiggle room in your budgets to increase our allocation. Um, that would be greatly appreciated that we can continue providing these services and making sure the kids get the services that we need. We do have some partners in the audience here today at MSP, the Sheriff's Department, a board member. Um, so just want to open that up. If you have any questions for me as the director, our center, the services that we provide. Um, we are in, we try to, you know, get to Ogoma County, to your outreach events. We are in the collaborative meetings, we, um, the Children's Trust Fund meetings. Um, you know, so really staying involved in what's going on in this community and what we can do to help prevent um, child abuse and neglect. I know um, some of my other counties, that was adjusted at Sego Suicide is going up with all of our teens. Um, and we know that a lot of the struggles that these kids are having as a result of abusive homes that they're being raised in. So as much as that we can do as a center to help support any issues that are going on into the community, um, we want to be a part of that and and help support that.
How much money do we allocate this this year?
Believe it.
It's usually, I think, three or five.
I am, I'm stuck. I saw you, and it's throwing me off because I thought.
Well, and I think what last year, you know, and I wa- I was going to ask, because um, I think we, I had asked for some ARPA funds and so we updated to five. Um, so that would be, be great if we could stick at five.
I'll um, revisit the budget and that's the number we'll use.
The five?
If it's five, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, thank you. For everything you guys do. It can't be easy.
We have our difficult days, but it's very rewarding too. So, and we have great partners. So.
I've said it before in other presentations, I. Know families that have used them and they're, they're great. Yeah.
Commissioner Wiltie? I also want to say thank you. Um, seeing this, that some of these numbers, I mean, it makes me cringe, makes me furious, makes me a lot of things, but. Knowing that there's you guys there for this um. Is uh, is good to know. How many employees do you guys have?
So we have eleven full-time. So that's my two forensic interviewers. We have two advocates. I have three uh, clinical uh, staff, so they are providing mental health. And then I have a program coordinator and then my medical director, myself, and then my assistant. So our medical director oversees our on-call program. So we have, and so we have a first step program. Um, where we have our, that's our nurses and advocates that are on call. So then we contract with, and actually we have a couple nurses that work out of the hospital here that are on our on-call. So they will um, just get called in with, we have to do that sexual assault exam. So we have a nurse and an advocate um, that are on call twenty-four seven to respond to the immediate, you know, immediate emergent needs. So we are slotted, hopefully, if everything goes through, all right, to um, to hire another therapist, um, probably by fall.
Your office is right in Roscommon?
Right in the craft center, yeah. Yeah, we have like a wing, we're just getting ready to expand. And right now, that's part of my frustration is, um, expanding services is because of the room. Um, you know, I have one interview room, but two therapists. I have two inner therapy rooms, but three therapists. So now um, the commissioners are working with us in Roscommon County, our detention center. I'm sure you've heard, has closed. Um, which is neighboring to us where we're located. So we're working with our commissioners right now to maybe take over that space. So we can reconstruct that and make that part of the center. So we'd be able to continue to expand services.
Do this do any fundraisers ever?
Um, yes, and we actually, we just had a board meeting Monday night. We were talking about what we can do in Ogoma County. Um, I'm trying to think, before COVID, we used to do dodgeball here. We had a dodgeball event that we did in a couple trivia nights. Um, and that's one thing that we're working on now. We cover six counties that we would like to have one nice signature event in each county and, you know, really, um. We were starting to get out there more and during COVID, now three years of COVID, it's getting back into that, you know, swing of things.
Can you contact my office when you do one?
Yes.
I would love to be more involved.
Absolutely.
Commissioners? Commissioner Simmons?
I've heard this presentation before, when I was a commissioner before. And this is a, a great organization. I mean. It's nice that they can just be interviewed once rather than be interviewed three or four times and this. Police officer and this person and this person, this person. Makes it much easier on the child. So we're very lucky to have you. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Mayhew. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your support and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Item sixty, we have claims. Total is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Commissioner Scott, did you review claims?
Yes, I did. Uh, there was a, nothing alarming. I don't think it was gonna be. Um, but there was nothing that really out of. Think, I guess. You know, kind of a routine. Flame period. Uh, Commissioner Simmons and I were both here at the same time, so. I don't know if she may have something.
Commissioner Simmons, you review claims?
Yes, I didn't do claims. I didn't see anything significant. Mr. Scott and I talked about a few issues that were on there, but they were not significant at all. So, nothing unusual.
Oh, uh, let me say this now, Brenda, I haven't talked to you since that one uh. Claim on the printing, I asked about that. claim on the printing, I asked about that. Um, Tim is streamlined the printing to whatever's in the county is under one silo of, uh, printing cost and in the, uh, animal control officer files comes underneath that silo.
Okay.
But everybody else over there is a special fund. The vet, veterans, building, MSU, they're all under separate special fund funded operations.
Kind of like postage.
Right.
Picked up on the post. You're quick.
They give you an answer there. Yeah, postage and copy.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
What's the twenty-eight seventy-five for the Rife River assessment?
What's that?
That would be the at-large assessment that the county pays and that's half of the full assessment. The other half is paid by the road commission.
For the rifle river?
For that rifle river intercounty drain.
Cause when it rains here, our water goes down there.
We pay that how often?
Once a year.
Oh, okay. Any other questions?
Is that total with the add-on?
Pardon me?
It wasn't add-on claim.
Did I receive that? I think I did. I printed it out. I didn't send the, anytime well.
Yes. Oh, my God.
Oh, no. No, this is a that's the add-on. I don't think I really see that.
Uh, it's in, it was in there.
Seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, fifty cents.
Four.
It was an emergency management homeland security expense that the board approved. I can't remember right off what it was for. You remember the thing.
So where, where?
I just want to make sure the total is.
Where did we receive this at?
Correct.
It's, uh, emergency management? Yes.
It's there, seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
You have to do so.
It's there.
What the clerk is saying though, this is not included in that total that you read, so we.
Right, that's what I want.
Yeah, it is. My mind is, is, is amount approved, emergency management. I've got seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, fifty cents, and that's part of mine. And then, then my total on the next page is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine fifteen.
Change right there.
Yep, we're good.
Are we good?
Yep.
So, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Well, you didn't even make a motion yet. You weren't right in discussion. So I'll make a motion to approve the claims presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item B, is there any unfinished business commissioners?
I have none.
Item nine, administrators report.
Um, it's, thank, emails that have updated you on the opioid settlement. Uh, this is starting to move pretty, pretty quickly.
Oh, you did.
We should have received by the end of the month, January thirty-first. An installment, our first installment, which will include a five-year payment off the Jansen settlement and then, uh, two payments, uh, for one of the other settlements. The total of the county expects three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, sixty-six cents. I've put this on the committee, the whole agenda next week to, uh, not only present this again, but do we finally have a list of authorized expenses, if you will, that are part of the settlement. That's a pretty long list. I think we, there will be no surprises for you on there, but we'll be able to look at that and begin talking about how you want to allocate some of this. Uh, we've already had presentations from a couple of facilities who do treatment for people who've had addiction. Now, we've talked about, um, sting and funding for the sting operation. Uh, both, as I understand, uh, the list, uh, both would be certainly, uh, eligible for some of this funding. Um, there is another settlement that we, uh, received notice of today that we will probably within the next week, uh, be able to tell you what, uh, kind of funds will result from that settlement. And like I said, this thing is moving pretty quickly and I'm not sure this is the last of them yet. These, uh, settlements are supposed to, uh, be paid out over, uh, gosh, I don't remember right. It was like eighteen years or something like that, but you can see on the Jansen, they're accelerating some of their payments, so they don't have to, uh, string it out that far. So keep updating you on that, but it's, it's time for us now to start looking at the list of eligible expenses and we'll start doing that at the, maybe the whole next week. I am happy to report that the X-ray machine has arrived. It's here, it's in the building. Our, um, security officials will be getting training on that. Once they're finished training, we'll have it installed. And we will finally end that saga, which is kind of nice. I don't know how long we've been talking about it. It's been quite a while. Um, just for the information of the board, um, for whatever reason, I've been getting, uh, calls from our township officials, uh, the last couple of weeks in particular. Uh, just so you know, when I get calls from township officials, I make it very clear that I have no authority whatsoever. They're really calling me for advice. What do you think? How do we make motions? What happens if a motion is never seconded or voted on? Uh, some pretty basic questions. I'm happy to help and, and talk them through it. Uh, I also recommend that, uh, when I have these conversations, that would be a really good idea to establish rules of procedure so they can address some of these things in advance. Uh, I found that very advantageous for the board here. We had a couple of meetings last year where uh, motions were tabled and then there were questions about, well, what happens next? So we can re-go rules of procedure and we can, we know what's going to happen next. Um, I try very hard to stay out of the township's business. So if this is coming down to, uh, dispute between uh, township board members, I, I try to distance myself. If there are basic questions about the open meetings act, those are, those are easy. But if it's a question about whether I should vote for this project, that's a whole other matter. And I tend to stay away from that. So I, you know, offer that if you hear, um, as you go out amongst the township meetings that, uh, while we called the county administrator and he said, well, you know where I am, you know what my platform is on that. And I don't tell them to do anything. Uh, but I can certainly, I think, help guide them through the maze of, uh, what some of their responsibilities are and how to deal with the motions. Uh, last thing I want to hit on right now is, well, actually two things. Uh, one of the upcoming committee, the whole meetings, I want to talk to you about and have a good discussion about what your goals are for your term. We did this in twenty twenty-one, uh, when the board was elected. And for me, it was very beneficial. I got some very clear ideas of what some of the things you wanted to see done. We didn't get them all done, but I think we've made significant progress. One example would be our job descriptions. Uh, while we don't have them all done, we are certainly leaps and bounds ahead of where we were two years ago. So projects like that, uh, and, and I realize that three of you are relatively new, but frankly, that's the time I want to hit you because you don't know you know, what the norm is yet. And then you're going to have fresh ideas that, that we can present and, uh, really hit. Last thing, uh, do you have an issue with our next committee, the whole meeting, which is next Thursday, the second, scheduled at nine o'clock? Uh, I am scheduled to be in the federal court at that time and it's not discretionary. The, the court has a bigger gavel than the chair. So I, it's imperative that I be there. I don't have to be at your committee, the whole meeting. I don't like you meeting when I'm not here, but I certainly would yield to your wisdom if you feel you want to continue with the nine o'clock on a desk, if you would consider moving that to five-thirty. I cannot guarantee I will be done by five-thirty, but I should be.
I, I don't have a problem moving that.
It's in Bay City, so I've got a, uh, issue there too.
Are you asking us now?
Yeah, because, um, it's the only time I've got you here between now and then.
February second.
Wouldn't just for next week, would another day be? Most, most of us don't have meetings on the first week of the month, I don't think.
That's what my mind are.
Are they? Okay. Well, I'm just saying that because he, like he just said, he has to drive here from Bay City to get here and then turn around and go back home. Um.
That, that's not, not a problem at all. I'm just more worried about how long I've got to have to be in Bay City.
Well, I'm concerned about your dri- drive time too, so you may not be, I am. Um, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that idea out. That's all. Is nine o'clock another morning? Okay. That, if it isn't, it isn't, you know?
It's not for me, but it's not for me, I'm a one person, so.
Yeah, I'm totally proud of that. I'd like to have Tim for, for all of our meetings, if at all possible.
I want to make sure you're talking about the committee, the whole, that the two, two topics, which I guess is, is, uh, the GPS system, make sure that's on there, committee of the whole. And also are those properties that we haven't, we didn't discuss either?
Yes.
Just came to my mind when you said that.
Okay, so five-thirty the next, next Thursday.
Yes.
Good.
Need a we need a motion to, I make the motion that we're, next committee is a whole meetings at, um, seventeen hundred hours on, um.
Seventeen thirty.
Yeah, well, yeah, the seventeen thirty. Sorry, I thought it was five o'clock, seventeen thirty, on, um, February second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with support. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
If this, is that time okay for you?
Hmm.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries anything else?
That's it.
Uh, item ten, elected official department head report.
Uh, Brett Gilner, Ogumah County Clerk. Um, uh, since our last meeting, the state has lifted the security on the November election, uh, meaning all of the local audits begin now. I was given direction to audit the city of West Branch. I completed that yesterday and I'm happy to say that everything was perfect. Um, and then I also had the opportunity to go to a special meeting for Edwards Township. Um, their clerk resigned last week, so they had a special meeting to do interviews, um, for potential candidates and I got to help ask questions and, uh, they chose a new clerk. Um, so that was that's it.
Treasure?
I don't have anything for you this evening other than we reported on your accounts.
On a shirt?
Overboard this evening.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Uh, Jeff?
Nichols?
From veterans? There you go, Jeff.
Oh, there we go. I, okay, uh, I don't have anything this time. Next week.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Item eleven, manager on the floor.
I have none.
Item twelve, motions for adaption. Item thirteen, committee reports. Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, many reports. Um, I went to, uh, Horton Edwards Township halls, meetings and, um, they in fact did in Edwards Township, um, choose another, another clerk because the other one resigned. There was some irregularities and the, hopefully will be resolved. Uh, Horton Township has a couple of issues, but I think they've been resolved to talk to Tim about them. So this about those, I think so. They've also been resolved. Uh, Commissioner Wiltie and I went to a transit meeting. It was very enlightening about the meeting. Uh, there was a lot we discussed, so if I talk about it, I'll probably miss a lot of things. So what I missed, you'll probably remember. But we talked about, um, full-time and part-time employees and we talked about, uh, monies that the federal and state government gets to, uh, gives to, um, the transit and there's no guarantee every year what they're, what they will get. So I mean, um, and it's up to the state and the federal government to make that decision. I mean, they could make a decision not to give us anything, but I don't think that'll happen. So, but there are two, uh, grants out there right now. They want to put a new building out there to put the buses in so they don't have to, you know, at dawn's early light before they start, uh, on the road and clean all those buses off. And you even have to really clean the top of them up because if the snow flies off the top of them, bring somebody's windshield, then we are responsible for it. And I think it now is, um, law, if I'm not wrong, because I always clean the top of my car, that you, you have to clean the whole, all your vehicle off so the snow doesn't fly off it and hit the vehicle behind you. So that takes a lot of time. So be wonderful. These buses now could be able to be put into, uh, a building and they would like to try to start doing that this spring, early this spring. The, the situation is though, they have a grant for this building for, um, the building, the asphalt, security gate and, uh, replacement of an, of an in-ground hoist because it's just about uh, I'll use this thing, it's four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Well, and this is done in twenty twenty-one, as we all know, how the prices have gone up because of inflation. So they will probably have to take money, I, I would say, out of the fund balance to help pay for this. And they also have a, a grant here for sixty-eight thousand for, um, to wash the buses. And it's a, a machine that you push around by hand and you push it all the way around the bus and it automatically will wash the buses off, so they don't have to do it by hand. And it takes a long time to wash a bus and this would be a matter of probably five minutes probably max to watch, to wash a bus, just be walking around because it's an automated thing that that whirls around like it does in an automated car wash that you take your own car through. So, and that's, um, and I don't know the price of that's gone up or not, but they had sixty-eight thousand dollars for that, so. So that's where they like to start in the spring, so they can get started on this. So, um, and we want to start using that grant money soon because as long as we start using the grant money, we won't lose anything. But if we don't use it in time, we will, we will lose the grant, the whole thing and we can't afford to do that. Uh, because we need this a lot. So, uh, and we have a wish list also of, um, things that have been requested plus things that, um, they would like to have as the, the facility number one, equipment and, uh, vehicles, other equipment. So they have quite a list here of things they'd like to have. But like I said, that's a wish list and so we're going down the priorities that they need right off the building and the car wash and, uh, and the new doors and stuff like that, new building, but so these come later, if there's any money left. So, and then we talked about, uh, full-time, part-time employees. I'll let you cover that, uh, Commissioner, um, um, Wiltie. Uh, that was, uh, along a long and com- kind of, and times complicated about how it went with part-time, full-time and who can do what, when they can do it, what do you need to do it with and so. So that's pretty much all I have.
Airport?
Commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry, what's the airport meeting?
You got to go to your first one. Go ahead and.
And then, um, there wasn't really much going on at the airport meeting. They, we elected the, the officers, the president, you know, the chairman of the board, vice chair, treasures. Um, not, and, uh, secretary itself. And I'm glad one of those positions weren't mine because I hate being secretary. I hated. So I didn't get, I didn't pull the unlucky straw on any of those. So, yeah, so it's just, there wasn't really much that went on at the airport meeting.
Mr. Mayhew?
I went to the health department number two. They got a program that they started this year to, uh, check all the young kids' mouths and see if they need to go to the dentist. The state paying. They're going to put some paper boxes. They have two of them. They're going to redo them and they're putting Narcan or something for dope, if they overdose, to save them.
Narcan.
They're, they're going to put two of them out and they're trying to figure out just exactly where to put them. They want to put some out for some other testings too later. And then there's a guy that wants to make Tate Park smoke-free. And he will come and give you a thermononid if you want. That would pretty much highlighted that meeting.
That's, that, that covered it pretty much, yes. Because they, they also elected their, you know, their, their officers and stuff and.
For the health department?
Yeah, when the meetings are going to be held, we received a sketch and all that, so.
Did you go to that one?
I don't smoke.
Did you go to that one?
I was like, the health department? Yes, of course I did. Yes.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Um, I was just asked, Commissioner Mayhew, do you want to stay down, uh, building security? I was not able to make that meeting. I know you were there.
The security meeting?
Yeah.
Did you want to give a little update on, on what was, what happened there?
Uh, they were talking about the new machine. They want to move it up to the front. And they want to redo the step coming in, so it's wheelchair accessible or handicap accessible because the back door's not. Uh, and they pretty much voted that everybody gets to walk through it every time. I think that was pretty much it.
Pretty much it, yeah.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Um, started off with stings. I had my first sting meeting today. It was very formal, a really good group of, uh, law enforcement officers, prosecutors, um, county commissioners on, on that group and, uh, basically the biggest thing that I took out of that, and I think it's something that, uh, is obviously going to really eventually start to hit us even more. Eventually start to hit us even more, which is, which is nerve wracking, but they, they definitely got a good start on it is. Methamphetamines and fentanyl. Are getting poured into the country right now from, of course, down south Mexico. But they're also coming up through Canada because they're finding ways to come from Canada a lot easier. And what they're doing is they are, is pouring in a large supply at a very low price. To get more people involved, so that's very nerve wracking, but they've got a good, good grip on what's happening and there's going to be more enforcement on that. Um, so that was probably the two biggest things that I saw there. I'm looking forward to going to more of those, those meetings. Um. Uh, let's see, the add on to transit, uh, kind of like Commissioner Sun said, it was a very informal meeting with Ray. Uh, we went over a lot of different items. I think the, the grant uh for the new cold storage building. And those items will be, will be great for that facility out there, uh, those buses. Would, would be nice to be in a covered building. Um, I think. The struggles that Ray has out there with employees, which he's, he's made well known. Um, he does have two, two interviews going on this week. With uh a couple of drivers that he feels confident on. And then also coming with our last meeting with Commissioner Mayhew, seeing people up by Rose City area, some of his constituents. Were really upset about no longer Saturday service. That was a big conversation we had. And that if we can fill the vacancies right now and everything can stay course. Uh, Ray's um goal is by April first to have Saturday service back going. Which I think is really important. Um, and one thing that we also learned from there is Michigan State University did a, a test. They had people on their buses. And those people were asking questions of. The consistent riders, you know, what, what do you see as a problem? What do you see as good? And the biggest thing that they said was the loss of the Saturday service. So. Right, I do see that Ray sees the importance of that and as soon, as long as he can be fully staffed or close. Uh, that will be coming back, which I think is a good thing. Um. Let's see, also EDC, I was, I was out of state. I wasn't able to make that meeting, but I made all the contacts. I'm really looking forward to being on that, on that committee. Uh, they have a lot of good things going on. They got some new people um involved. Um, and it seems like everything there is moving forward just fine. Uh, EMS, uh, I kind of stated last week, uh, they have uh some concerns with neighboring counties. Paying their EMS employees more money and we're, we're losing some, some of our EMS workers. So that's obviously a, a big concern. Um, but also with that. There's uh the budget, hopefully should be seen soon. I'd like to see the budget. Um, but obviously there's talks. Of a possible millage for there. Um. Right now, that is what I have to uh report.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I went to the airport with Brenda. Yeah, it was another very good meeting. Uh, we're, because of the. Incomet weather, Ben's been able to get more uh land clearing done. And that's been helping. Um, the only other township meeting I had was Oldham Township, uh. They've had to raise the sewer rates up first time since nineteen eighty eight, but they had to go up a little bit. Um. It's pretty surprising how much uh. Flows out of there, especially now with uh Myers. They use a lot of water out there. Unbelievable.
How much did it go up?
Um. Twenty, twenty cents a thousand gallons or something like.
Yeah. So not much.
For, well, for Myers, when you use a four hundred thousand gallons uh, uh, a month, that's quite a bit. But hey. They'll charge me more for eggs, I guess. That's about all I had of starts committing reports still. Oh, I did get a chance. Well. Putting for the county a little bit. I was up in Mayo today and. Three trench, three guys in trench coats come through the. The, the McDonald's there and I, I thought maybe they were CIA, but when they got in the car, it said SBSU on the. On the license tag, so I made a, I made them. Stop there at the car and told them about Oldham County and. Matter of fact, the president of SBSU was sitting right in the front seat, so. I sold them, I says, you know, Kirtland came here and then deserted us here in, in Oldham County. We could use. A college presence here, so. Take a good look at us.
Saginaw Valley?
Yeah, Saginaw Valley.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, not for me.
I actually don't have anything from the previous meeting. Logan Township did have a special meeting. Um, and I'm sure they're one of the ones that has reached out to you, uh, Tim. They had a special meeting, um. In an attempt to resolve one of their issues, but unfortunately the attorney. Um, called in Vic or was unable to attend, so. They still had a meeting. That they called to order and then they canceled because the attorney that they knew wasn't going to be there didn't come. So there'll be more to come on that. Um, the planning, the planning uh, uh, meeting was canceled because of the annex building renovations have, have started, so. And then we have a Michigan Works meeting tomorrow, so there's really nothing for me. What were you going to say?
You did go to the Logan or you did not?
I did not, but that was a, that was a brief scenario of what occurred at the Logan Township meeting, so. Item fourteen, we have general public comment. The same rules apply, but this is for any subject matter. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone. Item fifteen, we have closed session and there will not be, am I correct, and there will not be any business after our closed session?
Other than to adjourn.
Other than to adjourn. There'd be no motions, resolutions, nothing. Uh, can one of the commissioners make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go out of. Open session and the closed session. And that's for MCL in point two six eight E.
The consult with the county attorney regarding specific litigation. Commissioner Scott, is, do we have a support?
Support.
Report for Commissioner Wiltsey, yes.
Um. If, if we could just consider the, the language in the motion, uh, we've got two citations in the open meetings act that we're uh going to close session.
Oh, I'm sorry, one was E and one was C, right? So I'll amend my motion to include MCL. Fifteen point two six eight E and MCL fifteen. Six eight E. And it's a strategy collective bargaining agreement.
For you, we have to state uh in this case about specific litigation, what. Cases we're talking about.
Can we state that out loud? Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Okay, um, my motion is to cover the DNN garage. At Tal versus Oldham County Board of Commissioners. Number two, Karen Glenn Geteris versus County of Oldham. And McLean versus Oldham, uh, versus Oldham County. Does that fulfill?
You have to read, does he have to read item, our item B strategy session?
I, I said that it was strategies with collective bargaining agreement. I said that before.
I thought you just wrote MCL, okay. Do we have a motion with support? Roll call vote to go into closed session at. Six.
Six forty eight.
Yep. Eighteen forty eight.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, that's good.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons is. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Now we need a motion to come in and vote to.
Wait, wait until everybody's cleared. Other than our attorneys.
Some of the motion made, a motion of going to professional.
That one.
Wait, a motion, is that?
There.
I'm going to make the motion to go back into open session second.
Uh, we have a motion with support to go in the uh.
Open.
Open session. Can we get a roll call vote on that?
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion with support to adjourn at seven thirty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Uh.